Welcome to the November 27th meeting of the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors. We're going to call the meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance if you can join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can bear with me, I came home from Thanksgiving with a cold from my grandbaby. It was worth it. And then screaming at the game last night did not help matters. So, go Birds. Let's see if we can keep that winning streak going. The announcements that we have tonight are... We have a Touch a Truck toy drive. Thank you to all the families who came out to our Touch a Truck toy drive on Saturday, November 18th. Thanks to you, we filled our van with toy donations for Montgomery County families in need this holiday season. We thank Officer Rob Johnson for coordinating this event, and the Montgomery Township Police Department, neighboring police departments, the Fire Department of Montgomery Township, our Public Works Department, and the Optimists is Here organization for making this event a model of our community's generosity. Thanks again. We couldn't do that without everyone that helped out. The Lieutenant Patty Simmons food drive. The 28th Annual Law Enforcement Food Drive is running from now through December 13th. The food collection, one of the largest in our region, will supply numerous Montgomery County PA food pantries. Montgomery Township residents can donate non-perishable goods at the Township Administration Building or at the Community and Rec Center. Winter Coat Drive is running from now through December 29th. New coats are accepted and the largest need is for infant and children's sizes up to 5T. Residents in Montgomery Township can donate new coats at the Township Building or the Community and Rec Center. Holiday Craft Fair. The Montgomery Township Community and Rec Center is hosting their annual Holiday Craft Fair on Saturday, December 2nd. That would be this Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Come out and support local crafters this holiday season. I think it was a big, big success last year, so let's make it another success. Is there any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda for tonight? No public comment? We have a consent agenda. I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following, the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 board meeting. Second, any public comment? Call in favor. Aye. Motion passes. All right, we have a public hearing. I'm going to turn that over to our solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we'll adjourn this meeting and adjourn into that public hearing. And this is a hearing on the conditional use application that was filed by the applicant 309 Auto Vest Properties LP. The applicant seeks to construct and operate a franchise motor vehicle sales agency dealing primarily with new motor vehicles, which is permitted in the HLI Highway Limited Industrial Zoning District of Township when approved by conditional use. And that's pursuant to Section 230, 215A of Township Zoning Code. I have three board exhibits. I'll mark at this time. The first one is Board Exhibit 1, which is the application for conditional use approval filed by the applicant, who is also the landowner for the subject property. That property located at 1009, also with an address of 1011 Bethlehem Pike, in Northwell section of Montgomery Township. Along with that Board Exhibit 1 will include the addendum that was attached and all of the exhibits marked as Exhibit A, which are the Township Professional Review Letters associated with this application. Board Exhibit 2 is the legal advertisement or legal notice of tonight's hearing, which was published in the Reporter Newspaper, which was published on November 13th, November 20th, 2023 for public notice related to tonight's hearing. And Board Exhibit 3 is the proof of notice, being the letters from Ms. McConnell, Director of Planning and Zoning, Township to the adjoining landowners, which was mailed on November 10th, 2023. And that letter was sent to nine adjacent properties that are identified as the properties to receive such notice pursuant to the Township Code. Before I turn this over to Mr. Mark Jonas, Keith Spurren Gray, the attorney for the applicant, I'll ask to see if there's anybody here tonight that's seeking party standing to this hearing, if anyone wants to be a party. Hearing and seeing none appears then that this is then going to be turned over to Mr. Jonas to proceed with the application.
Thank you, Mr. Alago. Good evening. Go Eagles. My name is Mark Jonas. I represent the applicant along with John McShay to my right. We have an exhibit booklet that we are going to distribute. This is a conditional use application for the applicant, which is a partnership of the Natten family. The Natten family has been commercial property owners in Montgomery Township since 1969. You're familiar with the Nissan dealership, which is on in a budding and a separate parcel, and the Accura dealership, which is actually on the same parcel as the future dealership that we're discussing tonight in the conditional use application. The conditional use application, as this board well knows, is a zoning application. We are not yet at the step of subdivision and land development, which would follow if the board approves the conditional use application. We have two professional witnesses who will testify tonight. One is a civil engineer, the others are a traffic engineer. You will hear them discuss the review comments that we received from township staff and professional consultants. We know of no zoning relief, other than possibly signage in the future. No application has been submitted for signage yet, but other than that, our witnesses will tell the board that this is a zoning compliant plan, which is good for a zoning application, which is what conditional use is. So, just to go through quickly an overview of the exhibit booklet, which has exhibits A1 through A15. The first is the deed. Would ask the solicitor and the board to accept the standing of the applicant as the legal owner of the property, and then we can dispense with the very exciting testimony relating to deeds and property interest. So, is the board satisfied?
Yes, we'll accept that deed as proof of standing.
Thank you very much. Then we have a series of aerial photographs that we'll be discussing during the testimony of our witnesses. Exhibit A5, Tab A5, is the land development plan of Montgomeryville Accura back in 2004. This was an important point for the application because the proposed auto dealership for Mitsubishi is on a site that has been reviewed as part of a previous land development plan. So, it was typical site issues such as landscaping, buffering were addressed back in 2004. Our witness, Mr. Stoneback, the civil engineer, will go through the list of waivers that were part of that site plan. So, this is not a fresh freestanding dealership. It's a dealership that is part of an existing site. And the plan back in 2004 did in fact show a spot, and you'll see that plan as we get into our presentation, did show a spot for a future dealership, and it's amazing how time flies. So, the future is now, we hope, for Montgomeryville Mitsubishi. Exhibit Tab A6 is a landscape plan, also from 2004. Tab A7 is the land development agreement relating to the approval in 2004. Tab A8 is the fundly plan, the zoning plan for Montgomeryville Mitsubishi. Nine is a rendering of the proposed dealership. Then you have a series of the township review letters from staff and professional consultants, including the township engineer, the zoning officer, the police department, the fire marshal, and Montgomery County Planning Commission. And the last tab will be the traffic study. There are excerpts of the study in the booklet. It is a very large study. We have full copies available for the board for evening reading, should the board want the entire study. And our last and our second witness will testify about the traffic. We will note that last week, we appeared before the Township Planning Commission to be the favorable unanimous recommendation to the board for the conditional use approval. So, with that, I'd like to call Rick Stoneback, our first witness, our civil engineer.
Can you hear me? Yeah. My name's Richard Stoneback. I'm a S.T.O.N.E.B.A.C.K. I'm the president of Charles Shoemaker, Incorporated, an engineering and surveying firm that goes back into the early... There's field notes from 1906, so we've been around for a long time. I do.
Rick, would you tell the board, please, just give a summary of your qualifications?
Yes, as I mentioned, I'm the president of Charles Shoemaker Engineers and Surveyors, an Abington Township firm, and doing work in Montgomery County and Montgomery Township for a long time. I've been working with Shoemaker since 1981. I've been licensed as a professional engineer and a professional land surveyor in Pennsylvania since 1976. And we've designed many commercial, retail, residential, and institutional projects in both bucks in Montgomery County.
Rick, is this your first appearance in Montgomery Township, or have you been here before?
We've been here before.
And have you been qualified in legal proceedings as an expert in civil engineering, zoning subdivision, and land development?
Yes.
I'd offer Mr. Stoneback as an expert in those fields.
Civil engineering and subdivision and land development?
Yes, and touch of zoning too.
In a touch of zoning. He'll be deemed sub-admitted.
Thank you very much. Rick, we have in the exhibit booklet a series of aerial photographs. Let's go to Tab A2. It's a little difficult. Can you describe what Tab A2 is, please, what that shows?
That is the existing site. The building is the Accura dealership. It's, I think, 31,000 square feet. And if you look beyond the dealership building for the Accura, the parking of a few cars on the south side of the site, next to the quarry, that's part of the paved area that is the location of the proposed Mitsubishi building.
Tell us also about the other surrounding features besides the quarry, particularly in terms of existing landscaping and street frontages.
Yeah, as I said, to the south is the quarry, and that's a wooded buffer. To the north is the Pico line, and that has parking underneath it. And then adjacent to the Pico line is the Nissan dealership. And to the east is also power line and woods. And then the opposite side of 309 is the Wawa and the bank or credit union.
Let's go to the aerial, which is Tab 3, which is on display and also in the booklet. What's that view?
Okay, that view, the cars that are parked in the forefront of the building is or in the location of the proposed Mitsubishi building. The rectangle, the white rectangle that's located on the left side of the parking area, is the temporary sales trailer for Mitsubishi.
And Tab Exhibit 4, what is that view?
This is looking south from Stump Road. Stump Road's in the foreground. And that shows the Nissan dealership. And to the left is Nissan service. And in the very far end of the photo is the Accura building.
The Nissan dealership is on a separate parcel, is that correct?
Yes.
Let's go to Tab of A5. Tell us that, please.
This is a copy from our files of the approved land development plan for the Accura dealership that was done in 2004. It shows the Accura dealership, and then to the right, it shows a future dealership. And that is now determined to be Mitsubishi.
Were you here during my opening comments, Rick?
Yes.
So, this was a plan that was approved in 2004 that resulted in the land development agreement. And this plan showed that there was an area reserved for an additional dealership on the same lot as the Accura dealership. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
This plan, which is identified as the final plan, does that also have a list of waivers at the top right?
Yes, it does.
Can you run through the waivers that were granted for the site that included the dealership and a future dealership?
Yes, there's seven waivers listed. The first waiver was for a requirement for traffic study that was waived. The second was a technical plant requirement regarding showing right-of-way and cartway width extending beyond the site as required or needed by the township engineer. The third was to show tentative grades of an existing street beyond the proposed, the site that this was proposed for, which would have been on long 309. And number four was requirements that to grade the slopes in the buffer areas, not to exceed 25%. 25% is four feet horizontal to one vertical. And the board approved a slope of 1 in 3, which is 33%. Number five is a screen buffer, the western property line of the screen buffer at the butt at 309. And the board allowed that to be, as shown on the landscape plan that was approved. Number six was requirement for areas within 100 feet of a public street to be softened by a continuous low hedge composed of deciduous semi-evergreen shrubs. The board will allow this, as shown on the plan, which again was a landscape plan. And then number seven was the requirement that 10% of any parking area over 2,000 square foot be devoted to landscaping. That was waived up to 2.4%.
Rick, how large is the entire site?
10 acres.
And what are the points of access? And we'll hear more from our traffic consultant. But as an overview, tell us about access in and out of the site.
You can see on that plan on Bethelm Pike or 309, there's two right turn in locations and one right turn out location. The shared right-in, right-out is opposite the traffic signal for the Wawa project across the street, although there is no direct connection. You can't go straight at that intersection or left out. The rear, to the rear of the site, the driveway that crosses Pico and goes out through the Nissan dealership out to Stump Road. And people who want to go south on Bethelm Pike use that to go out to Stump Road, make a left, and then make a left on 309 at the light.
Let's move to Exhibit A6. Tell us what that is.
This is a copy of the approved landscape plan for the project that was prepared by Blackham Thomas Panzak.
And this plan showed the landscaping along the perimeter of the site, is that correct?
It shows the landscaping on the perimeter and then within the site, yes.
Tab 7, please. Tab 7 was the land development agreement relating to the approval of the land development for Accura in 2004, is that correct?
That's correct.
Tab 8.
This is a copy of a plan that we prepared for initial submissions to the township. And it shows the proposed Mitsubishi dealership. It shows the existing Accura dealership and all of the parking around it. And it shows in the upper left, it shows the waivers that were previously granted as they were modified by some changes in the township code to refer to different sections. And then on the bottom right, there was a zoning tabulation prepared for the site with the Mitsubishi and Accura.
Does the Mitsubishi proposed dealership alter any of the ingress egress points as approved in 2004?
No.
Tab 9, please.
This is a rendering that was prepared, I believe it originated with Mitsubishi, to show their dealership. And it shows the front of the dealership. The only difference is the service area is shown on the north side of the building, whereas on our project, it will be located on the south side of the building.
Then following exhibits are the review letters from the township professional consultant and township staff. You've reviewed those, is that correct?
We have.
They include the township engineer, the township zoning officer, police department fire marshal, and the county planning commission, correct?
Yes, we've reviewed those. We've had discussions with the authors of the letters. And with very minor exception, which could be related to signage, they're all, all the comments are will complies to be shown on our land development plan submission.
The township engineer review letter notes that the proposed dealership is permitted by conditional use in the HLI overlay district. The proposed plan is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so, but for the possibility of some sign relief in the future, there are no zoning issues relating to this application, correct?
That's correct.
The planning review of the township engineer also states the list of specific conditional use requirements. Have you reviewed those? Have you reviewed the ordinance?
I have.
And is the application and the plans, are they in compliance?
Yes.
With regard to the landscape review, is landscaping also in compliance?
Yes, the landscaping was approved by township back in 2004 in anticipation of the construction of the second dealership building.
And the exhibits you previously referred to show the existing buffering along the rear and side yards, correct?
It showed buffering on all four sides, quite frankly. The, there were some accommodations made along Route 309. And that's as shown on that plan. I believe all that, all of the landscaping shown on that plan has been installed.
The township's own ordinance has specific requirements for all land uses in the township, including automobile dealership. Does the proposed plan comply with the amount of required parking for a dealership?
Yes.
And that actually takes us into the zoning officer review, which is Exhibit 11, echoing that this is a use permitted by conditional use. The plan appears to comply with the dimensional requirements in the HLI overlay district. And all the required parking spaces per the ordinance are 10 by 20, is that correct?
All the required spaces will be 10 by 20.
Are there any areas of concern with regard to Exhibit 12, the police department review letter?
No.
With regard to Exhibit 13, the fire marshal review letter, did you meet with the fire marshal?
We met with fire department people, I believe, on maybe two occasions. And we can, we will be satisfying all of their comments. That was related to location of the fire department connection into the building for the nearest hydrant. And of course, the fire flows that have to be computed for the sprinkler system in the proposed building.
You also reviewed the comments from the county planning commission, Exhibit 14, correct?
Yes, we did.
And there were no areas of concern or areas of non-compliance with that review letter?
No, we can comply with all of their comments.
And that review letter does state, quote, "supports the applicant's conditional use application proposal, as they have shown that they will meet the conditions required to garner Board of Supervisors' initial approval and can proceed to the full land development process," close quotes. That was in the county review letter, was it not?
That's correct.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Stoneback. He's certainly available for questions. Our second and last witness will be Sandy Cozer, our traffic consultant.
Are there any questions from the board, the witness, related to the civil site plan?
None from me. I heard this all at the planning commission.
Sorry to be repetitive.
No, it's okay.
Thank you, Rick. Sandy Cozer, please.
I do.
Please say your name.
Sandy Cozer.
Sandy, what is your profession?
I'm a traffic engineer.
Can you give us a summary of your qualifications?
Yes, I work for McMahon and Bowman Company, and I've been there for 23 years with the company. And I have a professional engineer's license since 2004 in civil engineering. And my specialty is traffic engineering.
You also act as consultant for Midas Palis, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Can you give us a slide of a few examples?
Yeah, I do land development reviews and traffic impact study reviews for Upper Hanover and New Hanover Township, as well as providing services for Lower Silver Township and Whitpain Township.
Have you been qualified in Montgomery County before in court or any board of a township or borough as an expert in traffic?
Yes, I have.
And can you give us one or two examples?
Recently, Limerick Township, we've also been in some other townships, including Jenkin Town Borough in the county as well.
I thought Sandy Cozer is an expert in traffic engineering.
She's admitted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sandy, can you please tell the board the work that you and your firm did in connection with this conditional use zoning application?
Yes, we prepared a traffic impact study, which looks at the site access intersections. And that includes the right-in only on 309, the right-in, right-out only on 309, which is opposite the signalized left turn into Witchwood or the Wendy's Wawa access, however you want to call that one. We also did an internal count between the Nissan and the Accura dealership, just to get an idea of how much the whole site was generated under current conditions. And then we also did counts at the full movement access on to Stump Road. That's for the Nissan dealership, since that is shared for this parcel in terms of having that left turn egress movement.
Our Tab 15, our excerpts from the traffic study, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And we have full copies of the study available, is that correct?
Yes, and I believe they can then be submitted to the township for review as well.
Mr. Alago, do you want more than one copy of the complete study?
No, one's sufficient. I will take it, yes. Thank you. This would be the full Exhibit A15, then?
Yes.
All right.
It'll be a test on this.
Correct. Be right.
Sandy, do you have a chance to review the conditional use requirements in Montgomery Township?
Yes, we did.
And you looked at any of the relevant traffic comments from the township staff and professional consultants?
Yes, we looked through their review letter as well.
Can you tell us then what your study said in terms of ingress egress, the location of the site, the impact on public roads, and the impact on traffic?
Basically, what we were showing was that there was really no discernible differences between the without and the with development conditions for this in terms of the amount of traffic that the dealership was going to generate and the uses of the accesses when we reviewed those. So, those are all going to operate at similar levels of service, and they were operating... And they were operating at acceptable levels of service for the stop-controlled right-out only, as well as for the full movement driveway that's off of Stump Road for the shared driveway between the dealerships.
And there'll be no changes to the points of ingress and egress, correct?
No, there's no changes to those points of ingress or egress.
And what did you conclude in terms of any impact on traffic on Stump Road?
We are having minimal impacts on the traffic along Stump Road, as well as the traffic along Bethlehem Pike.
Of all the questions we have of Ms. Coza, we ask that the board accept into the record exhibits A1 through A15.
So exhibits will be so admitted. Does the board have any questions for this witness?
I had a couple of questions. When it came to estimating the traffic, the current traffic, especially along Stump Road, but also on 309, were there actual counts that were done of those byways? And or did you just reference sort of guides in this process?
No, we actually did turning movement counts. We had video equipment set up at all the access driveways out there. So we picked up all the traffic on Stump Road, as well as the traffic along Bethlehem Pike, and what was going in and out of the driveways.
So when you estimate the 685 additional trips per day in and out of the dealership, you don't, you don't see that as having like a negative impact on traffic?
No, not based on what we saw for the study. And that 685, that is projected from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for the daily traffic. So we did not do full daily counts at all the access driveways for the site itself. But if you look at that same table three, there's a methodology that shows how much the existing Accura dealership was generating, which is a slightly bigger building. And it's generating slightly less traffic than what we were using for our study, because we used the peak hour generator traffic for the site, which was shown to generate anywhere from 10 to 20 more trips during each of those peak hours compared to what ITE had projected during those same time periods.
My only concern here is that, especially along Stump Road, with the Westrum development going in basically across the road and using, like, it seems to me directly across, they're going to be using that to access that apartment complex.
Directly across the street from our Stump Road driveway, you're talking about that area? That's actually, I believe, a right-in, right-out only for the furniture store.
Am I in the wrong spot?
Yeah, it's further down.
It's further down, okay. I was, I'm concerned though about the amount of traffic coming in and out of there in addition to what's going in. It's in development right now. It's under construction. It'll be there soon, so people are, there's going to be additional traffic. And when we heard, when we were, you know, approving that site, we heard from some local neighbors in that area who were concerned about the amount of congestion that that development alone would put in that area and the traffic stacking that it would cause. So I wonder if those numbers, those anticipated increased based on that development going in were factored into your traffic study?
I don't think we specifically included that one. We did grow the traffic for three years worth of a background growth rate out there. So we have accounted for some increases in the traffic. The other thing to note is that the intersection that controls those queues is an adaptive signal system that PennDOT controls. And the way that that operates is it gives priority to 309 and the traffic movements on there. But it does give the ability for traffic to exit out onto Stump Road from our site access, as well as anyone from Stump Road onto 309. We did observations there, and we did not observe any queuing issues that were, we thought were problematic for our site. People were still able to make the left out and get into the left turn lanes to turn then south onto 309 as needed. So we didn't see any issues with the way that that was operating with the development of our site and the amount of traffic that we're adding onto the network.
I'm just, I'm concerned that that wasn't really factored into, especially the queuing that's going to be happening once that development is completed and resonates.
I think our worry about Westrum was that it was rush hour queuing. I don't think people are buying their cars at rush hour, are they? I mean, what time does the dealership open?
They are opening probably until 5:00. But we're only adding about, we were showing about 70 trips total, which is 35 entering and 35 exiting. And not all of our traffic is going to be using that Stump Road exit, because we do have the right-out that takes them onto 309, where they can then go north on 309 or get into the left turn lane to turn left heading in Stump Road on the other direction of travel, where they could take that to exit out onto Stump Road as well. So not all of our traffic is turning left out of the Stump Road access that we have.
Right.
Yeah, I understand that some of it will go out onto 309 directly. I just, I feel as if we haven't really factored in the additional traffic that's going to be. So this is kind of adding on to what's happening with that Western development. And I don't think that was factored into these calculations.
Just a little bit to her point. So no one's going to be buying a car that out of its service. Service may open early, and cars coming in and out for service or coming in and moving out.
I have a few follow-up questions, invite them.
Sure.
One, just in terms of background, this is a form of permitted use, obviously. So the township has decided by its owners that this use is permitted. And you do have very specific standards with regard to traffic matters in Section 230-156.2, subsection C3, says points of vehicular access to the lot are provided at a distance from the intersections and other points of access and a number sufficient to prevent undue traffic hazards and obstruction to the movement of traffic. Sandy, is it your professional opinion that the proposed use complies with that standard?
Yes, it is.
Then C4 in Section 230-156.2 says the location of the site with respect to the existing public roads giving access to it is such that the safe capacity of the public roads is not exceeded by the estimated traffic attracted or generated by the proposed use. And the traffic generated or attracted is not out of character with the normal traffic using said public roads. Does this proposed dealership meet that standard?
Yes, it does.
And then 231-156.2C5, a determination that the proposed use will not have an unwarranted impact on traffic in the area, either creating significant additional congestion in the area of existing congestion or posing a threat of significant additional congestion where there is a high probability of future congestion. In addition, the board shall consider whether the proposed use will create any traffic hazard dangerous to the public safety. Does the proposed dealership meet that standard?
Yes, it does.
I think it's important and interesting to note that the township standard, by referring to a high probability, is exactly the standard that applies to court cases when you talk about conditional uses or the first cousin is special exception heard by the zoning hearing board. And that is every new use is going to have an impact. The question is, does it meet these standards? And is causing a high probability of harm? And I think in this case, where you appreciate the concern of the impact of any new use, but we think that Ms. Coza's testimony shows that we do comply with the standards that are in the zoning ordinance.
Obviously, we're not traffic experts. We are the ones that get the complaints when people have to sit and wait for three lights to make a left turn and all of that. So it's a valid concern. I don't really know. Is there another traffic study that you would want to see or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, to your point about capacity and congestion, it doesn't seem as if the additional vehicular traffic that's going to be caused by that Westrum development has been factored in. And so I don't, you know, Sandy, I appreciate that you are an expert. And I, I accept your expertise. However, I don't think that those numbers were crunched. And so my, my question is, you know, how quickly could you factor that and come back to us with a more?
Their amount of traffic would just add through movements onto our Stump Road access. And our access is already operating at acceptable levels of service C condition. So it's going to continue to operate at an acceptable level of service condition, even if we add their additional traffic onto that. And we have accounted for some increases in that traffic based on the growth rate that we've used for the study as well.
So you definitely factored in the Westrum construction project?
It's not specifically accounted for in here. I think that's where we're struggling.
Yeah.
And it's the way that it's operating, the way that it's considered to be acceptable service is if it's operating at an A, B, C, or a D condition. We're currently at a level of service C condition for what's coming out of that Stump Road access. The amount of traffic that we're adding on there isn't going to, in terms of those through movements, isn't going to make it operate at capacity, which is level of service E or with delays at that intersection. There's still going to be gaps that we're going to have out there that's going to allow us to exit out there if they want to into the left turn lanes there.
Can you explain your reference to the future growth and how that is factored into your report and your conclusions?
Yes, PennDOT has a growth rate that we use. And in this case, we grew the traffic out for three years from the current date, which was 2023, so we grew them out for three years. So we added that additional traffic onto the site and onto the through movements out there along Stump Road. So that is accounted for in the study.
And what exactly is that future growth rate? What does that mean to us laypeople?
It's basically additional traffic that if we don't know known developments or something like that, it accounts for some of that traffic. So that it's accounted for in the study itself. But in this case, because we're at level of service C conditions, even if we were to add 20 to 30 or even more onto each of those through movements, we would still be at acceptable conditions in terms of what's coming out of those driveways, in terms of the operations there. So they would still be operating at acceptable levels of service conditions for the exiting movement coming out of there.
And Ms. Coza, that, those counts that you just came up with, is that in line with what would be a 256-unit apartment development?
How many units is it?
256.
It might be, because again, not all their traffic is going to come out there either. We would have to get a copy of their study to incorporate that in there. And that's something that we could do during the land development process. But in terms of how the access on Stump Road actually operates, it's shown in the study that's actually operating at a level of service B condition. So even if we added more traffic there, it would still continue to operate at what's considered to be an acceptable level.
And again, I know you haven't looked at the numbers, but to summarize the testimony, with a 256-unit apartment building and this development, it's your opinion that that intersection would still operate at an acceptable level, at a level C, certainly not a level E?
Yes. Obviously, we want to approve this because we're very grateful for the Nappan family, that they continue to want to do business here. But we do have some concerns. Since you are the traffic engineer, say we went ahead with this, and then there was stacking and terrible traffic. What, what can we do later? Like, what?
You would have to petition PennDOT to retime the adaptive signal there, because that is an adaptive signal. So it's supposed to adapt to changing traffic levels. And they control how much time the 309 corridor gets versus the Stump Road corridor. So that would be something that you would have to request them to do. So if there was concerns, even with the residential development coming in, that would be something that you would request of PennDOT to retime that signal.
And the focus of the application for conditional use is the impact of this particular use. We understand that there is going to be future growth, and the Western development is an example of that. But the township standard is not to impose on an applicant here the impact that another project may have. If we are taking into account future growth, and you have, and you have this testimony. So yeah, I think that's, that's what the conditional use, that's what your standards are designed to do.
How difficult is it to get PennDOT to change a signal? What kind of hoops do we have to jump through?
We typically will just write them a letter requesting them to analyze it, telling them based on what we're seeing or complaints we've received, similar to when we request a speed study on a state where they've worked with us in the past, either Chief Bendig or I reach out to them, and we've never had an issue.
Well, that makes me feel better.
Is there any signalization option for that exit on Stump Road?
What was, what was the question?
I guess, is there an opportunity to put another signal in there that would allow?
It's too close to the intersection.
Yeah, too close.
Yeah, PennDOT won't approve that.
Okay.
And I don't think it would meet the warrants for a traffic signal there.
Worth asking the question.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay with the answer of that we can change the, that PennDOT can change the signalization. Audrey, what do you think?
That's, that answer is acceptable for me as well. I just, I mean, I hear what they're saying, you know, they're meeting their guidelines for your growth. Not really thinking about, but we've got to think about it all in totality. So I understand this side of it, but I'm okay with that. If we can get it changed, then PennDOT, there's no issue somewhere down the line. I'm fine with that.
Agreed. You good?
Any other questions from the board? Okay, any other witnesses? At this time, we're going to open up the public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to offer comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, and noting that all the exhibits have been moved into evidence. There are no other exhibits. We will now close this public hearing. And this application is now in position to be voted upon by this board. And if the board could take action at this time, this board could adjourn into executive session. So the board would like to take, but at this time, we're adjourned for quasi-judicial deliberations. It's the board's.
We're good to vote?
Yes. We're good to vote.
Okay. So at this time, propose a, a board set forward a motion to approve the application for conditional use pursuant to conditions that the applicant reasonably comply with the testimony exhibits that were presented at the hearing tonight, and two, that the applicant comply with all applicable laws, regulations, ordinances of the state, federal, and local government, including the requirements to obtain land development approval and any zoning relief that may become necessary in the future related to this application.
So moved.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Alan and family, for choosing to do business here. We do appreciate it. We'll take a minute and let them clear out. All right, number seven, review of zoning hearing board applications, Mary Ann McConnell, zoning officer.
So included in your packet, we have a summary of two applications that have been submitted for the December 6th hearing, Love Car Wash at 739 Bethlehem Pike, for their proposed wall signage, two freestanding signs and directional signs. We also have Quick Loop of Carolina, which is next door, at 737 Bethlehem Pike. And they're seeking relief, form of a special exception for their proposed use, and some variances for setbacks, landscape buffer. The setback is in relation to the trash enclosure, landscape buffering, a loading area, and total stacking of spaces. The board may remain neutral on the applications and let the zoning hearing board render a decision, or the board may send the solicitor's office to oppose an application. That action would require a motion second and voted the board.
I think that our zoning hearing board can handle these. Does everyone agree?
Agree.
Okay. Number eight, Public Works. Consider a word of contract for the traffic signal modernization at Route 309, Taylor Road, and McLaughlin Road. Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. Good evening.
The township received an open bid utilizing PennBid on November 8th at the Township Building. The bid was actually properly advertised and PennBid was used by all bidders and all information was provided to them. Gilmore and Associates, our Township Engineer, reviewed the four bids ranging from $583,789 to $739,215.36. And they are recommending awarding the bid to Armour &amp; Sons Inc., the lowest responsible bidder, with a bid of $583,789. And the township does have experience working with Armour.
Anybody have any questions? I will say, I hate that every bid is coming in so much more than what we budgeted for. But that's the world right now. If there's no further questions, I will move to award the contract for the traffic signal modernization at Route 309, Taylor Road and McLaughlin Road to Armour &amp; Sons Electric Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $583,789 per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to parks and recreation. Approve the winter 2024 recreation program and fee schedule. Floyd Schaefer.
Good evening. Before you tonight is a proposed lineup of activities at the Montgomery Township Community Recreation Center for our winter 2024 season. Included are the recommended fees and charges for each program and/or event. And/or event. The schedule will be valid from January 1st through March 31st, 2024. All Mont CRC activities will be promoted through our normal public information channels. The diverse lineup of activities, programs, and community events provides a comprehensive menu of positive recreational opportunities. Contained in the winter schedule are healthy fitness classes, fun community gatherings, and continuing education programs. CRC opportunities are inclusive for all individuals and ages and abilities within the Montgomery Township area. As far as the budget impact, recreation opportunities are designed to be budget neutral. And our staff's recommendation is to approve the winter 2024 programs and fees scheduled as amended and as submitted.
Looks great. I love the girls' flag football. Is that new?
That is new, yes. There's a couple of new things in here. I had to bring a little bigger one than you're looking at because I couldn't see it. But there are a couple of ones. The biggest thing that I'd like to bring up tonight is that during the budget discussion, there was discussions of what our fees are for kids university. Traditionally, you approve those fees at this time. I looked at it and the recommendations that we're coming back for would be $240 per week per child. And for residents and non-residents, it would be $250 per week. And obviously, the Fourth of July week would be promated per day. The per day amount basically is $48 a day for a child to come.
Still a bargain.
Considering if you go a little bit further, it's about $6.80 an hour. And everybody pays sitters or supervision in some form. So it's a jump. It's a, but I don't think we'll have any trouble filling the spaces and because of the fact that we've gotten better staff and that showed this year by the amount we increased the wages. And there's, and the budget that we have is easily covered by that. So we're in good shape.
I think people can appreciate that you have good staff as well. Really good staff.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I'm going to move to approve the 2024 winter recreation programs and fee schedule amendment as submitted.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And number 10, Old Business. Proposed 2024 capital expenditures and capital reserves fund. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager, and Brian Shapiro, Director of Finance.
At your last meeting, when the township considered adopting or authorizing the advertisement of the budget, we went into great detail for capital for 2024 and beyond, as well as your budget work session, which was held on October 27th. Tonight, we just wanted to follow up with you to see if you had any additional questions or if you had any further direction for us in how we're going to handle funding our capital needs going forward as part of our five-year capital investment plan. I know subsequent to the meeting, Ms. Bamford reached out to Brian to get some additional information, which he provided to Ms. Bamford as well as the rest of the board. And I believe he had some follow-up questions. And if there's anything else you would like to know tonight. Otherwise, if we don't get any definitive recommendation one way or another, we are going to include at the December 11th meeting that we transfer money from the general fund to the capital fund, which would still leave us a fund balance that is acceptable with the Government Finance Officers Association standards, but we would do nothing as far as our real estate tax mileage.
Okay. Well, we definitely think that we should move the money every year, at least for the next few years, to the capital fund. I think all of us would feel better to see that fund beefed up as much as we can.
Understood. Agreed. But I think we also have to look at a mileage increase. Because using the spreadsheet that Brian Shapiro prepared, which is wonderful, it's a wonderful tool that allows us allows us to estimate what the balance will be in that fund projecting forward several years with or without mileage increase. And we're rapidly going to run out of money in that fund and then be unable to maintain our roads, our traffic signals, replace vehicles for Public Works or the police department. So this is unfortunately something that is really necessary in order to have the funds when we need them to maintain those capital assets.
Agreed.
So a .45 mileage increase would have the effect of generating around $853,000 and change per year. And through 2028, based on expenditures, by the end of 2028, our fund balance would be So, you know, again, there may be opportunities to add additional funds, transferring from the general fund as we are able to help bolster that fund. But based on our projected expenses right now, it looks as if this mileage increase would be sufficient. And then if it winds up not being sufficient, we'll have to revisit it and say, you know, 2027.
I'd rather revisit it now and add to our fund. I guess the question is the amount.
The I thought looking at, it was a really great tool that Brian prepared so we could estimate the impact that this would have on our residences based on, you know, average residential tax bills. And so a .45 mileage increase would result in about a $75 increase per year. So that's kind of what the bottom line number is on average for the average household in the township. I'm interpreting that correctly. Yes, thank you. So.
What is your, I'm sorry, what is, what are you looking at as the average household?
The average assessment is around, give me one second. It's average assessed, average residential assessment in Montgomery Township is 166,432.
Okay, obviously, some will be lower, some will be higher. I guess, Brian, what's your opinion if we were to go with the .45? It's a lot of money for some families, but there are a lot of things that people do expect to have in our township.
And not to cop out, but I mean, I'll defer to you guys for that decision on what's the appropriate. You know, providing the numbers, you know, based on our projections, you know, and funding the capital and based on the capital needs that we have now. That would take it basically to, you know, 2028. And then, you know, other decisions would have to be made, as you indicated, maybe transferring money if there are better, you know, good years in 2024, 2025. But based on that projection, the .45, it does get you to close, you know, funding to 2028.
So that puts $853,000 per year into our capital fund besides what we would decide to transfer over into it.
Correct.
Given the opportunity, yeah.
Given the opportunity.
If it's a, exactly, yeah.
So the goal of the capital investment plan in a five-year look forward was so that we could see what we needed to do. And as we spoke to you previously, there were prior years where things weren't addressed in a timely manner. And so they're all sort of coming at the same time. We've aggressively gone after grants. So the traffic signal, for example, that's being, going to be bid for 309 in English Village was, we received a county grant for. We have PennDOT grants that we've applied for and that we've been successful with. We know costs are going to go up, obviously. So this is just what things are estimated to cost. If we did everything right now, what we don't know comfortably is the amount of surplus the general fund could see every year. We were fortunate during the pandemic because of the array of businesses that we have. We saw healthy business privilege tax and mercantile tax paid to the township. However, we also know retail establishments, the
The mall.
The environment keeps shifting, right, and the mall, exactly. You know, anybody who went by the mall on this past weekend saw a very dramatic difference than what we're accustomed to seeing at the mall. So we can't count on that. The other stores are all healthy. You know, we see Airport Square, if there's a vacancy, there's a movement in there. We see businesses relocating, but they're staying within the township. We just don't, we can't comfortably tell you, we can guarantee, you know, a minimum surplus each year going forward. What we can guarantee is that the things we have pointed out are things that we need to do. And that's coupled by the things that we're, just as part of our normal maintenance, things have wear and tear, the playground equipment. You know, we've hit on some parks and again, we were able to get grants from DCD and DCNR. But however, you know, we don't know that that's going to be the case going forward. Yet those parks that we haven't touched yet, Spring Valley, they're still going to have to be addressed. You know, with poured surfaces, with playground equipment, and everything is going up. We're doing our best, you know, each department head looks at it with a very fine eye to what really they need versus want. But the rec center is aging. You know, we've sort of had a benefit in terms of one year less wear and tear because of COVID and having to be closed for a good part of 2020. But that's not the case going forward. The traffic signals, once, you know, the one good thing is they have very long estimated useful life. So as we put them in, we're not going to come back to you in a couple of years and say, we need to borrow $15 million again. $15 million is because of the wide array of, you know, assets that needed to be addressed in this township. And there was just no other way to do it but borrowing that money at that time.
I think it's fiscally responsible to look ahead, to look at the years and plan it out the way we're talking about doing it right now versus doing nothing and pray. I mean, prayer is good, but we need to, we need to be responsible. And I think it's the right thing.
I agree 100%. We were spoiled for a very long time because the developers came in. They funded all of this for us and the township is built out. We just aren't getting that money anymore. You know, no more gifts. I agree with Audrey. It's what we need to do. Again, the people that live here expect certain things from us. And this is what we have to do to keep those things and do it.
I agree. And I would, I would just address for anybody who might be watching this at home or watching later that the increase that was passed two years ago was dedicated towards, you know, underwriting debt and our fire safety services. And it has been applied for those uses. The Capital Reserve Fund got a big hit when we settled a lawsuit over the ZER parcel. And that cost the township $7.5 million. Severely depleting that fund. So we have to replenish that fund. And this is the responsible way, to Audrey's point, to do that, to ensure that we can continue to maintain our township to the standards that our residents expect.
Okay, 100%. So we're good with that .45? Okay, is that enough direction?
Yes.
All right. Anything else under old business? Didn't you want to talk about street tree?
Yes, I just wanted to report back at our last meeting. I was asked to go back to the Shade Tree Commission with news of the complaint and ask the Shade Tree Commission to further study the ordinance that is in place for replacing street trees and examine what other neighboring communities are doing and how well that's working. You know, what are the plans and provisions that are in place that are working well elsewhere? And they have taken this to heart and have agreed to evaluate and come back with a report and a recommendation by February.
Great.
Oh, the one question that I had that I didn't have an answer to though is in our fee schedule, because there is a permit application currently on the books in our ordinance that says that if you want to take one of these street trees down, that you have to have a permit application in place. But we haven't actually been accepting any of those permits. Is there a fee defined for that particular permit that's published?
In the time that I have been here, there is no fee that has ever been established for a permit for a tree.
So could we even have someone complete an application? If there's no fee that's been published associated with filing that kind of a permit?
If there's no fee that's currently adopted by the board and someone were to make an application, we would not be able to charge them a fee and then we'd have to come to you and say, we need to do a fee. We could work with Judy Sterngold sign about what other communities are doing and see if there's a fair fee to come up with for that. I just, again, it gets back to enforcement. You know, all permitting is on our system. So, you know, we can't go on people's property, we can't go in their homes. So if people are doing work, even if it's removing a tree and we're not aware of it, we don't have a method to go out and determine that unless someone brings it to our attention.
Well, it just kind of creates a sort of, we're, I feel like we're in sort of this no man's land because we discovered that there's a permit application that's on the books. According to our ordinance, you want to remove a street tree and you've got to fill out an application. But come to find out, we don't actually have an application in place for it.
Right.
Nor do we have a published fee associated with, you know, filing for that.
We're not sure though, the realisticness of having a permit fee to remove a tree. That's for a discussion for the board after the Shade Tree Commission weighs in.
So the Shade Tree Commission is Part of Shade Tree's evaluation and report. They were going to look at enforcement, permitting, how feasible it was.
Yes.
And replacement. And they were also going to look at education as well.
Yes, and I think that's, that's all good, but it won't happen until February. And so in the, you know, in a rainy months before we get our recommendation back, we're sort of in in this sort of gray area, this sort of gray area, and we have a complaint. So I'm wondering what provisions could be made, you know, to handle someone who, hey, I have a tree, I'd like to take it down. How do I go about, you know, doing that?
We don't, we don't. In actuality, in real life, what we do, we don't require a permit. We tell them if it's a street tree, it's required to be replaced. If it's not a street tree, we have no regulations over it. The shade tree is a street tree. If it's not a street tree, we have no regulations over it. The shade tree is a street tree.
So it's it's not a concern that the ordinance says you have to have a permit, but we're, so we're just not going to require that, we're going to waive that, I mean, so.
Well, it's not waiving it, it's coming back to the board and saying that we don't think it's administratively practical for us to give permits out to people who are removing trees because we don't believe people are going to come in and apply for it.
They're not.
You know, every ordinance that the board passes, we always look at and say, is it, is it feasible? Is it reasonable? Can we enforce it? You know, we just, you mentioned street trees, you know. I've also received complaints about residents taking trees down off their property. So if it was part of the subdivision and land development, you know, process, and they were required to have trees along their front yards, not necessarily street trees, but, you know, just for, you know, having a certain amount of trees, and they take it down. Sometimes it's a third and fourth owner, they're not going to know that, you know.
So my my point in asking the question was that I wanted to have an application or even enforce. It just seems, it doesn't seem logical, I guess, to have that on our, on the books if if we have no provision in place for actually even accepting an application, nor do we have a fee, you know, published.
Just take it off, right?
Yes, and that's where I'm going.
Looking at that as an option.
We were looking to come to you and recommend that you repeal that portion of the ordinance.
Well, why do we need to wait? And I mean, because, you know.
Well, we're going into the winter months, and we thought, let's give the shade tree because what if they make a recommendation to add something in terms of an ordinance? This way, we would do it all at once and ask the solicitor for assistance in drafting something. If you want to repeal the ordinance, and that's the consensus of the board, we can immediately work with the solicitor and bring something before you and authorize the advertisement that you're going to repeal an ordinance.
Yeah, I think, I think, let's let the shade
Yeah, let them do their job.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I want, yeah, I'm going to allow them to do their job. That's not, it wasn't my intent to like not allow them to see this through. They're, they've embraced this this project. My my point was more like technical procedural, if if we don't really have an application, why, why do we continue to?
You're right, but we, we at staff, we cannot repeal it. We have to make a recommendation to the board.
Which is why I'm
And going forward, hopefully, anytime we come to you with a suggestion for an ordinance, we'll internally have looked at it. Is it feasible? Is it practical? Is it something that we can do? So when you did the plastic bags, you researched, you said, yes, we can do this. And what are the mechanisms that we're going to put in place to ensure that everybody knows about it? And then what's our, what's the enforcement for it? So we had a plan in place before you adopted it that we knew we could make work. I'm not sure that that was always done in the past, evidenced by Mary Ann's tenure here and saying she's never been approached for a permit to remove a tree, so.
And I think if I'm hearing it correctly, that by February, they're going to look at all of that.
Yeah, and and part of the ordinance, one would be, one recommendation most likely will be repealing that portion of that ordinance and then making some changes to other portions of the ordinance. So doing that in one recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice and clean.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll wait, and anything in the intervening time before the recommendation comes can be handled on a case-by-case basis. Okay.
Now, for the January meeting, we asked Valerie from Gilmore to come back with her research with the other municipalities and what they have in place and what works and what doesn't work.
Good. Okay. Sounds good. We have skeleton crew here, but we can still, Department of Department reports. Is there any questions or comments on department reports? We got them all. Thank you for the time that you take to get those to us.
Oh, I did want to share really briefly that, you know, I spoke with the president of the Winter Circle HOA today, who really enjoyed the presentation that you all made, and he gave high praise to both the Chief of Police and Chief Fire Department, so as well as Carolyn McCreary. So thank you all very much. You're doing good representing us well.
It was a nice presentation. As far as committee liaison reports go, Planning Commission was the nap-in dealership. Everybody was all for it. That's all I have.
I was not able to attend my reading, but I know we have breakfast with Santa coming up. Looking forward to it.
That would be great.
I had the sewer authority meeting right before Shade Tree Commission. You know, the 60th celebration, it was sort of a recap. It was a very brief meeting. And then I went over to public safety, sat in on the public safety commission, committee meeting, which there was just more discussion about some, I guess, we had an interesting conversation about lithium batteries and the difficulty of putting out fires caused by lithium batteries. And I was advocating for more education on that topic, by the way. And and then I think parks, gosh, what did we talk about on parks? We, we had a presentation, yes. Yes, so the architects made a presentation and solicited feedback from the Parks Board on what we might like to see happen at that farmhouse over there at Wendell Stray. And so they're going to come back and make some recommendations.